Afternoon, good evening, almost. How's everyone doing today? Welcome. Okay, so at this time, I'm gonna call the Southgate special meeting. If we can have roll call, please.
Mayor Davila.
Present.
Paris Mia Barron.
Present.
Councilmember Avalos.
Present.
Councilmember Lado.
Present.
Councilmember Rios.
Present.
City Treasurer de la Paz.
Present.
City Mayor Andrew Houston.
Present.
City Attorney Salinas.
Here, just stepped out for one second.
Okay, item number one.
On behalf of the city council, Mayor Maria Davila will a) present certificates of appreciation to the outgoing 2024 Miss Southgate Court for serving on the court and for being there dedicated and representing the city, and b) introduce the incoming 2025 Miss Southgate Court. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And for that, we have our Miss Southgate Coordinator. I was gonna call you Cindy. Sorry, Lindsay. Lindsay Cogs.
Thank you, Steve. You've known me my entire life.
Oh, yes, and I'm calling you Cindy. I have my glasses on, so.
I'll accept it. Well, good afternoon, good evening, Honorable Councilmembers, Steve, and everybody else here today.
Yeah, they see? I'm not the only one.
It's all with love. Thank you for having us and for your continued support, not just with last year's court, but in all the years. To reference to this outgoing court, there are not enough words, and we don't have enough time, because I would be here much longer than five minutes.
No, you only have three.
I'd be here more than three minutes. I promise that. But all in all, these young women are amazing, and it's big, big shoes to fill. But I have so much faith in this incoming court, who have now already kicked off their year, and they're doing wonderful as well. We had some graduations from Southgate High School, right, and from Los Alamos. And our girls are off to college. I will let them share where they're at, but they're off doing wonderful things. And one of our girls is on the court this year. As you know, we made the one exception where we gave them the crowns here at the council meeting. And so she was able to compete again. Otherwise, this is not a usual thing. So, thank you so much. I'll go ahead and I'll have the girls come up and introduce themselves one by one, and then, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I wanna take this time to, first of all, to the outgoing court. You guys did a fantastic job. I mean, you were, I mean, you represented our city very well. Not just in the city of Southgate, but when you went out into other cities. I mean, I can say that I was very impressed with the comments that other council members were saying about you. You guys represent us very well, and we are so proud of you. You know, we wish you the best. And I know that some of you, I mean, going to college, graduating high school, but I know that you will be coming back, you know, to this beautiful city and either get a job in the city, but giving back to our youth. And I think that you guys are, I mean, just amazing. It was an honor working with all of you the last year. So I'm just looking forward to continue seeing you out there, but you will always be representing our city. So, thank you for that, that year of service that you gave to our community. So, thank you. And with that, I'm going to be presenting the certificate of appreciation to to the, it says, "Certificate of Appreciation Presented by the Southgate City Council on behalf of citizens of Southgate to, first of all, Miss, Miss Southgate 2024 Barbara Bascas." And recognition and commendation for your dedicated service to the Southgate community during your reign as Miss Southgate 2024. And we also have Natalie Romero. Brianna Burcian. And Valerie Platon. Amanda Osedos, she's not here today? Yeah, okay. All right, so we got certificates, we have certificates for them. But I know that you will also be introducing the new court. So, and I'm gonna go ahead and let you do that, if you can go ahead and introduce the new court.
All right, so Amanda is on our court as well for this year. She is one of our princesses. And it is my pleasure to introduce Princess Destiny Lopez. Princess Kaya Duran. First runner-up, Camila Morales. And your 2025 Miss Southgate, Mia Valdez. I do have to share that Mia just graduated from Grand Canyon University.
Wow.
Correct? She just turned 21, so she's doing big things. And Amanda, again, is not here. She's currently a junior going to senior at Southeast High School. And I just wanna pay tribute to our girls are going. Valerie, you're going to UC San Diego. Brianna, you're going to Vanguard on a full ride. Barbara and Natalie, you are going to Cal State Long Beach. So, they all just graduated from Southgate and Los Alamos, Southgate High School. I gotta make sure I note that. And they are doing big things. And to our incoming court, many congratulations one more time.
Well, congratulations to you ladies and to our Miss Southgate. Are you gonna say a couple of words?
Yes, I just wanna say hi. It is very nice to meet you all. It's very nice to be a part of this city. And to be a part of the 2025 court, I know the court and I are very honored to be here and for you guys to give us your time today. And we hope to make a huge impact this year and to see all of your lovely faces. And Steve, you as well. And and we hope that, you know, this year holds a lot of great memories and great events. And we thank you all, so thank you for having us and for being here and for supporting us. Thank you.
Absolutely. Okay.
Everybody's catching the vibe with Steve.
Okay. So we'll go ahead, council, we can go and take pictures of the girls. Item number two.
The city council will issue certificates of appreciation to the
International Studies Learning Center.
For participating in the robotics world championship.
Thank you. Okay, this is for the robotics. The robotics team, where is the team? I saw, I saw Mr. Hernandez back there. Okay, Mr. Hernandez, bring your team up. Let me go ahead and read the certificate. It's, it's a certificate of appreciation presented by the Southgate City Council on behalf of the citizens of Southgate Two. And I'm gonna read the first name, and then we'll continue reading the rest of the names. To Maxim Garcia, team captain and rob, robot builder. In appreciation of your outstanding achievements and for representing the Southgate community at the 2025 FIRST Tech Challenge Championship held in Houston, Texas, April 16 to the 19, 2025. Out of more than 8,800 teams worldwide, you were honored with the judges' choice award for your unique contribution and team excellence. The Southgate City Council proudly recognized your dedication, innovation, and commitment to excellence. We are proud of you and look forward to the many great things you will accomplish in the future. Congratulations. And and to the team. You guys make this city very proud. Because by you participating in a competition worldwide, you put Southgate in the map. You guys put us out there. And believe me, a lot of, a lot of those competitions that, I mean, competitors that went out, they probably didn't even know where Southgate was at. But now, they're gonna look into the map, and they're gonna say, this is, this is where Southgate comes from. So you guys, I mean, put us in the map. We are very proud of you. Congratulations. And you guys are future engineers. It's amazing to see so many of you participate. And I just wanna, you know, thank you. Thank you for what you guys do. But of course, you know, you participating, I mean, you didn't do it alone, right? You obviously had, obviously, the schools, I mean, the school particip, I mean, support. But most important of all, you had your parents' support. Because without your parents, you wouldn't be able to go out of state to be, to compete. So to the parents, thank you so much for what you do for your kids and allowing them to go out there and experience something so beautiful like this that they will never, never in their lives will ever forget. So, thank you, parents, and continue supporting your kids, 'cause you have the future right here. And we'll look up to you. 'Cause I know that you guys are going to go far. 'Cause with great minds and just putting a robot, I don't know what it is. It's a car or, but whatever you guys did, I mean, I wanna see it. Because, I mean, it's the future. And you guys are the future of Southgate. So, thank you very much for what you guys do. So, I'm gonna go ahead, yes, let's give him a, let's give him, let's give him a round of applause. Thank you. And, and I'm gonna read the rest of the names. Maxim Garcia, he's the team captain and robot builder. Start coming in, and council, we're gonna go take pictures. Elisha Guerra, lead engineer. Andre Mosqueda, robot driver and engineer. Max Ramos, robot driver. Kalen Sanchez, lead designer. Ariana Descareño, outreach lead. Jocelyn Lopez, outreach manage, manager. Still have a couple more, hold on. Samantha Figoso, outreach media officer. Ian De La Paz, who is this? I know. Engineer. And hold on. Oh, we have the coach. Where's the coach? Oh, my goodness. Miss Rosario Lutero. And one more. Somebody's gonna have to help me pass them out. Mr. Kenny Liu, coach. All right. Okay, Mr. Hernandez, you're gonna have to say something, 'cause I know that you're very proud of these young folks here. So, please do.
Again, yes, the parents were a big part. And our dragons are amazing, they're very talented. They have a great future. But it takes a village, and I just wanna thank the entire city of Southgate. I'm glad to be back in Southgate, where I've served for like 15 years, and then took a little seven-year break to help another community. I'm back. And I just love how you embrace the community. We could not do this without you, like, literally, the funding that you provided and all the opportunities. That is amazing. This is what a real community looks like. And thank you so much to the city of Southgate for supporting our students. Like, you already know, all that our students need is opportunities, and you provided that for them. This team has only been around for a couple of years, and you helped to take them to a new level. So, thank you for your support. It makes a big difference. Thank you, city of Southgate.
I just wanna say a couple of words. I had the opportunity to fly with the team and join them for their championship. It was an amazing time, and they did, you know, fantastic. You know, I was just amazed at, you know, given the resources that they were provided in the beginning of the year with the robots and, you know, all the other technical gizmos and gadgets they needed. They went really, really far. If you would've seen some of the teams that were out there, they were with their tour buses, they were competing at a high level. And for us, with the resources that they were able to have in the beginning of the year to get this far, all we need to do is keep investing in them, and we will come back with a trophy, I believe, next time. So, congratulations, you guys did, you guys did an amazing job, and, you know, count on us to continue to support your team. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, thank you so much. Where are the coaches? Let's give them a round of applause.
Let me just say, as a teacher and an educator, my hats goes off to both of you, because it's not just being in the classroom. This is beyond the classroom. This is giving them and providing them those real-life experiences that they will take moving forward, and hopefully inspire them to then do more. Elon Musk started small, look at where he's at. Bill Gates dropped out of college, look at where he's at. So, I believe that sometimes, school is a wonderful thing and learn from your teachers, but don't ever forget that one mind, one individual, can change the world. And I highly believe that each and every one of you are very capable of doing that. So, teachers, thank you for investing your time, work, but more importantly, your love. Your love to your students and the love to our beautiful city of Southgate. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you. Okay, so with that, thank you very much, the robotic team. Now, we go to our next item, please.
City council will issue certificates of appreciation to the Southgate High School cheer team members recognized for their 2025 championship win.
Thank you. For all the students that are here, I know the councilwoman said that there's some kids that dropped out of college, and it's okay. As a parent with kids at college, it's not okay. Please finish school.
Okay, correction, correction. I stand corrected. However, there are individuals that are very good with their mind and their hands, and sometimes don't have the focus in the real books. So, let me just tell you, my hats go off to you, whether you go to college or not, but I want you to understand that you are valued. Your mind has value. So, keep doing what you're doing. And let me tell you, as a teacher, I will push my students to go to college, but I also understand that sometimes our minds don't help us to be able to stay focused. Thank you.
No problem. I just muted her mic while my kids were listening, though. I just mute. Yeah, but I wanna go ahead and first off and say congratulations to the Southgate Rams cheerleading team. I think that this is, yes. I think it's a very difficult thing to win CIF. It's very difficult. It doesn't happen too often. How many times have Southgate cheerers won CIF? Twice in 10 years. That's amazing, guys. So, I'll go ahead and read the certificates of appreciation presented by the Southgate City Council on behalf of the citizens of Southgate to the Southgate High School cheer team in recognition of your outstanding achievement in winning the 2025 Los Angeles City Section CIF Cheer Championship. Your hard work, dedication, and team spirit have brought pride to Southgate, and your victory is a testament to the talent and determination of each member of the team. The Southgate City Council proudly honor your remarkable achievements and look forward to the continued success in inspiring the accomplishments you will achieve in the future. Signed by our mayor, Maria Davila. So now, I'm just gonna go ahead and announce the names. Anna Aceves. Maria Aguilar, come on that side. Congratulations. Yaritza Almanza. Congratulations. Angelique Alvarez. Sofia Arana. Brianna Avina. Delilia Godinez. Delilah Godinez, sorry. Natalie Gomez. Jalen Gutierrez. Destiny Mercado. Lilian Paredes. Congratulations. Anna Rodriguez, varsity captain. Camila Rodriguez, varsity co-captain. Jocelyn Mosqueda. Sarah Uribe. Ashley Garcia Venegas. Anna Rosas. Coach Fernando Rivera. Congratulations. And Destiny Rivera. Ladies and gentlemen, our 2025 LA City Sectional Cheer CIF champions.
Just wanted to take the liberty to say a few remarks. Coach Fernando, Anna, give it up for your coaches, right? And Destiny. You know, two championships for the city of Southgate. Wow, that's amazing. You know, I mean, they have led, the, the coaches have led the team to two championships. They also help promote school spirit, athleticism. They emphasize teamwork, good sportsmanship, and communication skills. They also encourage their athletes to understand their abilities and develop them through dedication and hard work. They also foster a team culture where athletes feel safe, valued, respected, and supported. Give it up for the coaches and the champions. Congratulations. You make us proud.
Let me make a quick comment here. You guys can, yeah, so
Let me make a quick comment here. You guys can, yeah, so Anna and Ferny, I think we started almost at the same time, right? At Coach Softball. And I was trying to recruit some of your girls to play for us. So, if you have any of them that are capable, please send them in our direction in August because we can certainly use some more players. And I'll send you some of our girls, okay? Fair enough. So, again, congratulations, ladies. You're fabulous. You did a great job. Thank you.
I just saw some of the parents out there and a few of them I went to high school with and I'm like telling her, didn't we just graduate from high school and now we're presenting certificates to our kids? It's crazy.
Go ahead.
Well, thank you, council members, for this opportunity. As always, this is the second time and I really appreciate it. I also want to give a big thanks not only to you guys, but also to the team that they have worked really hard. Also, for the parents that have been very supportive throughout the whole year because this sport is very long. We have two seasons, actually, I would say three seasons, football, winter, and spring. So, we're year-round. Not only that, they're busy, they multitask. They're involved not only in their education, holding that high GPA, but also being in a sport and also being involved in the community. So, it's a lot of work and time consuming and I really appreciate the team. Thank you for everything.
Thank you. Thank you and congratulations, young ladies. You have a great leader right here, your coach. And I think that she has, you know, teach you values which I think that goes a long way. You know, what your teacher teaches you, you're gonna take that the rest of your life. And I think by competing and by getting where you guys are at right now, you guys, I mean, like I mentioned to the other, the other team, you put Southgate out there. You really do. And you know, we have three high schools in Southgate and you guys make us so proud. You guys make us very proud. So, wherever you guys go, you know, when, wherever you guys go, when you guys, I mean, graduate high school and you go to college, come back and give to your community, give to your peers. I think that's really important for you guys to remember when, just to come back and give back to your community. And right now, you guys are already doing it because you're representing this beautiful city of Southgate. So, congratulations to all of you and to the parents. Thank you again because without you, they wouldn't be able to do what they do every single day. So, with that and to the coaches, thank you for your continued commitment with the girls. Thank you. All right, then we'll continue with our agenda. Thank you very much. Have a wonderful day. And we'll move on to our next item.
Item number four, the City Council will consider receiving and filing a list of new and promoted full-time employees hired and promoted during April 2024.
Who's first? My glasses. Okay, who's first?
Community Development.
John?
Good evening, Council. We have four employees to introduce this evening and we're going to start off with our Community Development Department with our first employee, Mr. Gabriel Perez. I'll turn it over to our city manager, Rob Houston.
Thank you, John, and Council and remaining guests. Just wanted to introduce Gabriel Perez or Gabe, either one he says works for him. He's been with our city now five weeks, maybe so, going into six. So, it's been a while, but we wanted to introduce him formally to the community. And I'd like to see he has over 20 years of experience in urban planning and community development. His last job before here was Development Services Director at the city of Coachella. Not the party, but the city. Unfortunately, he said, he didn't get to be the Community Development Director of the concert. So, he has experience in planning, building, and code enforcement. He has played key planning roles in diverse, diverse communities, including San Clemente, La Quinta, and Riverside. He's dealt with general plans, zoning code updates, rail station planning, master plan development, project management, and implementing process improvements that enhance customer service. I think all of those skill sets will serve him well in our city and we're looking forward to his input and assistance to keep moving the city forward. And just his hobbies that he did mention include sailing, hiking, and urban agriculture. So, if anyone needs any tips on backyard tomato plants or something, look to Gabriel. But welcome, Gabriel. Do you want to say anything, Gabe?
Just again, happy to be here. Really excited. It's already been six weeks. It's felt like a long time already. Like I feel like I'm getting adjusted and adapted and, you know, I've been happy to get to know all you council members and there's a lot more to do in the city. I like to, one of the big things I like to see happen is make the impossible possible. And that's a big thing for me. And so, you'll see me do the work that I do with a lot of idealism and optimism of what's possible in the city of Southgate and I look forward to the work ahead.
All right, Steve.
I don't know, am I next? I was gonna give him the urban orchard if he's falling to that stuff. First up, Noemi Aguilera, Aguilera, sorry. She actually was a lion tamer for the Ringling Brothers in Barnum and Bailey Circus until they stopped having animals in the circus. And so, she moved on to being a dispatcher with the trucking yard. She figured truckers were easier than lions. But now she moved to public service in Parks and Rec and we're probably a little more difficult than lions. In reality, she grew up here in Southgate. She graduated from Southgate High School. She previously worked at the heavyweight transport place. That's the chemical and doing clerical and customer service. She's excited to be here and serve her community. She claims that Meat Bowl, where's Meat Bowl? Ooh, Long Beach Boulevard. The Meat Bowl is the best restaurant in Southgate. I don't know, is it good? I've never been, we're gonna have to go there, Noemi. She loves hiking, going to Rodios to see her family compete in team roping and volunteering at her church. Welcome, Noemi Aguilera.
Thank you all so much. I'm very happy to be here. As I mentioned, I'm born and raised here, only lived, when addressed my whole life on the other side of the train tracks here. So, I'm very excited. I love the team so far. Everybody's so fun. I love it. And then obviously being, moving from being like in an office where it's all truck drivers and you know, all I saw was concrete to now this beautiful environment at the park. Yes, so I'm just so happy to be here and thank you, guys.
Thank you. Welcome.
We did tell her she would have to bring her whip in her chair some days, but that's okay.
Go ahead, Steve.
Next up, Karina Reyes. She's here. Karina is our new marketing coordinator. All those Instagrams and Facebooks and all the new things we'll start to see for the Parks and Recreation Department. She produced a few already for the 5K, right? Well, she grew up in Landale, Lomita, and Redondo Beach. I don't know how you do that all at the same time, but she did. She managed that somehow. She graduated from Landale High School. She received her associate degree in communication study from El Camino College and her bachelor's degree in advertising and public relations from Cal State Dominguez Hills. She is really looking forward to growing within this well-rounded and passionate community. She is also excited to be able to represent and advertise the city of Southgate on social media throughout various media outlets. Some of the things she likes to do in her off time, she enjoys running the Los Angeles Marathon. So, she must be crazy. She likes taking pottery classes on the weekends, loves to travel, which is a A. She plays pickleball and she plays tennis. Give a big hand to Karina Reyes.
Thank you so much for inviting me here today. I am very excited to be here. Also, everyone has been really extremely welcoming to me for the past few weeks. So, I'm really appreciative towards everyone. They thank you so much for always being so friendly to me. I really do appreciate that. The staff has been extremely welcoming as well, very friendly. Everyone has been helping me. So, that is also something that I'm very thankful for. Again, I am very excited. I hope to see everyone around the parks and the community as well. I'm really excited to start posting more as well, advertising and doing social media. Thank you.
Welcome. Okay, police.
Don't go away yet. We're gonna have photos.
For Noemi, since she has experience as a dispatcher, don't get too comfortable because we've got some positions at the police department.
Uh-oh.
And then Karina, since Karina's ran a marathon, we could use you on the Baker Vegas team. So, yeah, don't get too comfortable over there. We're gonna, we're gonna be talking to you.
If we're doing a trade, I'll need a player to be named later, okay?
I'll allow them to patrol the parks. Okay, Council, I know that you like to hear these stories about, you know, our new employees coming to the police department. This is someone very familiar with the city of Southgate. Officer Priscilla Batros Divas was hired by us sometime last year in 2024 where we got her a little bit of time as a, in the department before she went to the Rio Hondo Police Academy. We promoted her to a police officer this past March and she is familiar with the area. She was previously a dispatcher and a police aide at the city of Bell. So, she's familiar with the southeast area. She was raised in the southeast, graduated from Huntington Park High School on the principal's honor roll. She comes from the city of Bell where she spent the last seven years. She obtained her post-certification as a communications training officer. And again, she was considered a first responder as a dispatcher. Throughout her childhood, she volunteered in the summers at San Gabriel Elementary. She also attended Southgate Middle School where she was a member of the marching band and she participated in the Christmas parade on Tweedy Boulevard. I'm sure she'll be working that this, this year as well. She also was a member of the choir, performed Christmas carols at the Assisted Living for the Elderly, Greenfield Care Center in Southgate. And these memories led her to the city, back to the city that she's a police officer with now. She's a proud mother of four children, two boys and two girls. Her hobbies are centered around family and she enjoys baking with her kids. Once she finishes with training, she promised to deliver some home cooked cookies for the administrative staff. So, we're gonna test her cooking skills.
What about council?
You can add council to the list.
And council as well. And she also enjoys drawing, painting, and crafting and taking her kids out to the movies or to the beach. It's just a blessing to have somebody with that experience of the background and, you know, dispatcher. She's gonna do great as a police officer. She fits in very well here. So, congratulations and welcome to the team.
It's like that you said, I did grow up in Southgate. It's actually really nice to be patrolling because I remember and can recall certain businesses that are no longer here, you know, just fond memories that it just takes me back to my childhood. I do really feel blessed to serve the city of Southgate. I thank you, council members, especially Chief Arakawa for selecting me. So, thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. Okay, that's it. Okay, let's take a picture. Okay, next item, please. Okay, closed session?
Item number one, pursuant to government code section 54956.9A, 54954.9B, 3C, A Emeritus Alguira versus City of Southgate et al. Item number two, conference of labor negotiators, pursuant to government code section 54957.6, agency representation. It's Rob Houston, our city manager. Unrepresented employees are top management, departmental directors, and hourly employees. Employee organizations are our Southgate MEA, Southgate PMMA, Southgate DMA, Southgate PMA, and Southgate POA. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Our city manager, do we have any further?
No other comments, nope.
Okay. Anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this? Any of the items? The closed session? No? Okay. Do we have any emails for closed session?
No emails, Madam Mayor.
Okay, then we go into closed session. We'll be back. We'll be back.